Need to sit closer, I can't hear shit.
Sorry, was on the bulletin board?
Yeah, what did you say? Yeah, can you hear the thing?
It's so loud. I thought it was supposed to snow.
That sounds like the city is hobbled? So what the hell is that gonna work?
Hey Dale.
No.
Oh my god, Paco sat in fucking his seat, look.
I can't believe he's, he made it.
Okay.
Alright, I'm calling for the city council meeting dated twelve two nineteen eighty-five. Um, first thing we're gonna do is uh announce the election results officially and have the council members come and take their seats. Um, bring up to the podium, come and sit down, uh Alistair Humphries, Ashley Williams, congratulations on your second term. Paco Burrow, congratulations to Billy Falco. Can make your way down here. Yes, that's, yeah, that's true. Well, I actually did, well, I thought you did some speech, you did some speech. Do you wanna do another one? Alright. Alright, perfect. Alright, now you gotta do yours. Yep, exactly. Alright, well, Alistair, you uh, you have the floor to uh give your acceptance speech and tell the city council and the city what uh your plans are.
Alright, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Alistair Humphries. I stand before you today as the heart of a new tomorrow, and it is an honor to be elected as one of your eight city councilmen. To be honest, three months ago, I never would've thought I'd find myself in the position that I am. I never thought I had the will or the spirit to make it this far. And that I was gonna be stuck in an endless cycle of fear and wonder for the rest of my days. I quickly learned that it didn't have to be that way, and I had to pick myself up by my bootstraps and pull myself together, so that's what I did. Most of you have known me for some time now, even as far back as my early days working at Hornies or driving for the cab company. Most of you were introduced to me by letting me be your realtor and trusted me to take care of you and let me be your friend. And I've gone cro- grown close to many of you over the last several months, and that is not changing. I will still be your friend, your realtor, your shoulder to lean on when the clouds block out the sun. Because I've been there, and I've walked down that road that some of you may feel you're lost on right now. But at the end of every storm comes a rainbow. Myself, along with my fellow councilmen up here, want to assure you that we will see that rainbow together. And I promise you, during my time here, you will only see the utmost action from me as far as you so choose to let me sit here. I promise you that not every day is gonna feel hopeless, and citizens of the city will have their chance to thrive when their opportunity strikes. The streets don't need to feel like a death sentence every time you go to work. New businesses and opportunities will present themselves, and we'll find ourselves in a new age, and we'll get there together. Thank you.
Alright, appreciate it. Alright, um, next up, Paco.
Hello, but I remain sitting because I stand and run at people all day long. Everything you heard about me is untrue unless it was good things, okay? I'm here to just make sure that uh no fuckery is, wait, am I allowed to curse?
No.
Fuck. There's the merits?
Oops, oopsie.
When is all this gonna get explained to me?
Well, you're, act, act as if, act as if this is the courtroom, and you are... Alright, well.
There's no SOPs, no manuals, no guides? Jesus Louise, alright, and that is why I'm here, folks, okay? I'm an American, I'm an American first, a cop second, rich third, and I'm gonna make this thing my fourth, okay, a city councilman.
Are you speaking into the microphone?
Don't worry. Uh, thank you for voting me in, uh, 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 we're gonna, we gotta get some kinda guidelines, SOP, sir.
You need to be told not to cuss as a guideline?
It would be helpful, yeah. I'm a, I'm a managed man, I'm a, I'm a, you know, I'm a layman. I, I think so.
Is, is this, does this constitute your acceptance speech?
Yeah, this is still it, this is, the whole thing is it. This is going on record, right?
I mean, I would appreciate it, I'd remember that gust.
Alright, good, beautiful, beautiful.
And don't, and don't forget, we can censor you if you decide to act that line, and that'd be easily, easily reviewed, and you can use that as a guideline for the next time.
Alright, there you go. So, so everyone just follow my lead, and uh things will get done uh very, very well, thank you.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
How many strikes, um, do strikes fall off?
Nope.
This is your speech. What are you gonna do for the people? What are you gonna do for the council? What are you gonna do for future?
First step, first step, people, I'm gonna figure out how this whole thing works, okay? And we'll go from there, thank you.
Alright. Uh, yeah, Billy Falco's here, so yeah, Boblin, go ahead, give your acceptance speech.
Council, Mayor, Snookums, and the people. I have already been in the council for a long time, but I never got an acceptance speech. So all I have to say to you is I will continue to be the voice of the people that you allow me to be, for power belongs in the hands of the people, and my heart belongs too amongst the chattels of America. Long live democracy, long live freedom, long live the people, and it's not a cult, thank you.
Definitely not a.
Do you wanna?
Kinda cult.
Pledge of allegiance.
Oh, absolutely.
My leadership of the pledge of allegiance to Paco, the police officer, for his service to the community in today's pledge of allegiance leading.
Oh, I second that mission.
Absolutely. Wait, do I, do I like say it line by line, or I?
You have to say it line by line, yeah.
Okay, okay, everyone repeat after me like a true American, I see people not standing, I see people not standing.
Let's strike one and a half.
I see people not standing. I see people with hands on.
Will you stand?
God damn it.
Do we have bailiffs?
We don't have any bailiff.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Hey Tabs.
I have a master, sergeant of arms.
I would just, this American.
Still waiting on one person.
You're doing great.
Alright, well. That's, uh, 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 an American. Uh, everyone repeat after me, okay, 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 okay. Well, that's okay, I mean, well. If, if, if we could have everyone please face the flag.
It's about America, but it's still America, right?
There's three flags in here.
Okay, the American flag, please.
There's three American.
There's three American flags.
Where?
Pick one, look at it.
Two in the back, one in the.
Barry, that's the ball is getting signed, not a salute.
Oh, it's all the way up there, it's, I'm sorry, I don't look up, I don't look up, okay, this is, okay, everyone, shut, 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 shut up. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the, of the United States of America.
And to the republic of which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
It's not a cult.
I was told I would say it, and then they would say it back, I, I was confused.
Big job, Tabs.
Yep, uh, and on that note, uh, Billy Falco has arrived, Billy Falco, do you wanna address the council and the floor about your reelection and what you plan on doing?
Now, hi, um, I got reelected, I, I really appreciate, I really appreciate all those that voted for me, and um, for those that didn't vote for me, I'm gonna work even harder for your support. Um, I'm glad that, you know, I have this opportunity to continue, you know, trying to represent small businesses and, you know, and, and individuals within the city, and and I really look forward to this opportu- you know, the opportunities that arise. Um, you know, you guys know you can always come to me, uh, if you have ideas and whatnot, and uh, or complaints. Thanks.
Can't hear you in the back.
Alright. Next order of business is going to be, um, go through, I know the new members, city members aren't gonna have legislation, but they could either uh take the floor and propose what they're gonna be working on the next few weeks. But we'll go ahead and start from my right to left, uh, Councilman Rowland, you mind addressing the floor? Got some legislation to present or uh a speech to make?
Uh, Councilmember Rowland Sicard, uh, my uh initiative to amend how we uh how we do warrants in the state is currently still being tabled as we are working with the OJ to uh, address this issue, um, and I have no new legislation to propose.
Alright, you have your time?
Time.
Councilmember Billy Falco.
Uh, well. We're, we're on a big, you know, health of the city initiative, so I, I'd like everybody to stand up.
Boo. No. No, I'm good.
No!
What are we standing up for? I don't wanna nationalize, everyone gets cake.
I already stood, you sit down.
No, I burst, come on now. Alright, go ahead, Bill.
Well, I was gonna lead everybody in, in a round of uh jazzercise, but maybe, alright, maybe not.
Oh, no, nevermind.
Is that a strike? Is that a strike? Is that a strike?
I would just censor.
He should grow to impeach.
Do you have uh any legislation you're gonna bring to the table?
Uh, I, I have none this week, thank you.
Alright, yield to uh Paco, I know we've already gone through this, you can yield your time if you have nothing to say to the people of the council, you have no legislation to present, unless you've already written legislation, which would be immensely helpful, I guess, you know, do you have anything?
No, you uh think too highly of me at this juncture, I don't even know what we're doing here. Uh, you have time to bobble.
Alright, alright, bobble.
I would just like to welcome our new esteemed council members, Mr. Paco and Alistair. Uh, I'm sure that both of them will be wonderfully contributive members to the society that we are trying to cultivate, and they have my full support. Also, hi again, Billy.
Can I say thank you if it's not my time?
Yes, you can say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're at a point five now. Uh, I would also like to say I have nothing to pass today, I just have a quick little request of uh procedure, another procedural request that we could perhaps discuss.
Hmm, I'm, I don't open, uh, open the floor for discussion, yes, what is it?
I would like to suggest that for the entire month of December, when we thumbs up for America, we also say happy holidays to the people that have come to watch us uh fight for their rights.
Alright, all of those in favor of amending to our normal procedural etiquette to add in Boblin's request?
What, what was her request?
Their request is every time we thumbs up for America at the end of the council meeting, we say happy holidays to all the people here.
That's the thing we do?
Uh, it, it is if you vote on it.
Just for the month of December.
Yeah, just the month of December.
No, if it thumbs up, okay, yeah, sure, yeah, 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 yeah.
Alright, great, yeah, okay.
Uh, motion, motion's passed.
Alright, pass, great.
The procedural request's been granted. Alright, Mr. Williams.
Are they gonna say happy holidays?
Uh, so yeah, I don't have anything to present today, I, again, would like to welcome Paco and also uh Alistair, um, to, to the, to this uh cornucopia of foolishness. Um, looking forward to seeing what you two can bring to the council, I unfortunately don't have anything to, to do for the uh citizens of Los Santos, um, this week.
Alright, alright Doc, you have uh anything I can present?
Um, yes, I'm work- working with Rowland on, um, some ideas with regarding what has been happening in Pillbox, um, more to come on that soon, hopefully.
Alright, look forward to seeing it. Alright, uh, Mr. Humphries.
Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for their uh warm welcomes, uh, it's an honor to be on this seat, uh, at this current time, I do not have any uh new legislation to present.
Alright. Um, I don't have any new legislation to present, I'm currently working on revising the tax bill to get that finally passed judiciary. Um, and then I did wanna open up at least some discussion today about uh how we're gonna handle the flight school and um, the DMV and the, I believe it was a was it a driving school, I believe, so we have a fi- a flight school, a driving school, and um, some considerations for uh Department of Transportation if we need it, but I wanted to open up a discussion for that today. That being said, I would like to move this to the people, if the people want to have any questions, concerns, statements to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I changed my mind.
Are, are you raising your hand, Boblin?
Say, yeah, me too. I, I did, I remembered something, but I didn't know when to introduce it, because I don't understand how this works. I, I don't have new legislation to propose, but I did wanna see, how, how do, how do we revise uh the text in the constitution? Okay, well. Oh, I have to be in Ryan, can't just say what I wanna do?
No, you gotta write it.
We, we really need SOPs, sir.
Well, so the constitution is a spoken or written bill?
Uh, it's written, or current, it's gonna be like the university text, there's a, there's a thing in it that's stupid, and I don't wanna make it, I wanna make it not stupid anymore.
Well, you're gonna have to write a proposal on piece paper.
Bobby, can you help me with this?
And present, and present it to the.
Alright, Bobby's gonna help me, okay, okay, thank you, uh, you'll, you'll back time to somebody, to you, sir.
You, yeah, okay, alright, Boblin, you raise your hand?
I wonder how long Paco's gonna last.
That is very true.
What?
And the green helps, I appreciate that, so.
I wonder how long Paco's gonna last in the city council.
Um, so, is it, turn this over to the people, anyone have any comments, concerns, questions, statements, uh, please come up to the, address the council?
I don't know last.
Yep.
Sanction petitions. Um, yeah, we have to make sure it passes judiciary. Um, alright, sir, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Niall.
Hi, Niall.
Hi, Niall.
Hello.
Did Paco re- uh, explain what he meant when he called the university stupid?
Can I talk, do I talk?
Hey, he's, he's talking, yeah.
Uh, yes, uh, no, uh, there's a piece of the legislation in the constitution that is stupid. Oh, I re- I rebut- uh, I rebuttal.
Rebutts.
Uh, no, there's a, a section in the constitution that was put forth when the university legislation was added that made the uh whole university a weapon-free zone, and uh, that includes, you know, bats, brass knuckles, or a knife. And uh, you get charged with a, a lawful possession of a firearm, which is a felony if you bring a bat onto the university grounds. Uh, that's fucking stupid. Ah!
Decorum, sir.
Oh, come on.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
It's a dollar to the jar.
That's my council member.
I don't wanna do that, okay, sorry, uh, that, that is, that is less ideal.
I moved, I have a swear jar, I'm, I moved to.
Uh, and I would like to change it to possession of a firearm in a restricted place, that would be my idea, sir. The university itself is not stupid, that piece of uh language is, in my opinion. Rebuttal ended. Thank you. Sorry.
Do you have any more questions, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, do you have more questions?
Alright, go ahead, what's your question?
I don't have anymore.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, thank you for your time.
Oh, that was stupid.
Robert Daynob. And uh, mine is just, uh, since we have some.
Can you speak up? I can barely hear you, sorry.
You could, I'm shouting.
Interesting, might be the rain.
Say it with your chest, say it with your chest.
Robert Daynob. And uh, my request is that uh now that we have four new members, or two new, two new members on the uh council, that we uh try to arrange to where uh the entire city knows that they're being represented by every once in a while holding some uh meetings at a different time, so other time zones can participate. I know a couple of the mi- members of the, the council have already said something about wanting to uh do some, some meetings at a separate time. And I think that the council should act, make an active uh point to discuss that, to see if they can't work out, uh, every once in a while, doesn't have to be all the time. Uh, the, just to have a council meeting in other time zones, so the entire city feels like they're represented.
Alright, yeah, I, I agree, we've already proposed.
Agree, yeah, it's being discussed in council chambers.
Yeah, we already have a discussion in council chambers about this. Appreciate your time, though, definitely.
Yeah, we got chamber pots underneath here, so.
You are, you're a part of the council chambers.
Like a dungeon.
Yep.
Finland cabinet, sir.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Niall.
Hi, Niall.
Hi, Niall.
Hey, Niall.
Hi, Niall, welcome back, Niall.
Under the statute of grand theft auto, it says no person shall, uh, vehicle anyways. Uh, bikes are counted as vehicles, I don't think they should.
Can you repeat that, son?
Why are bikes counted as vehicles?
Oh, before that.
Like for grand theft auto. If somebody steals a bike, they're getting charged with grand theft auto.
Okay.
Yeah, that seems a bit excessive.
Sounds like it's to be its own charge.
We have two prosecutors on the, on the uh council now. You guys wanna take turns to this one?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, so I can speak to that, uh, right now bikes are been in the city, what, three days?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, legislation has caught up, um, I, and that is basically the, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, councilman. Uh, but uh, the, the police are here to uh basically charge what they can based off of the penal code that is, as it exists, and that's what he can do right now. Councilman, you got anything to add to that?
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, that's something, that's something that we could talk about, uh, at the PD with the prosecutors, but I, I wanna have no trouble, and I don't think anybody would disagree of uh labeling uh bike theft as a petty theft. Which is uh no jail time and a two hundred fifty dollar fine, or maybe just bumping that up to a grand theft, but that's uh, I don't think there's a thousand dollar bike. But uh, it's something that definitely can be worked with, with the current legislation, while we wait for, you know, new legislation, yeah.
Yeah, currently there is no bike that exceeds over a thousand dollars, is that correct?
That is correct.
So it wouldn't even reach that uh threshold for.
Correct, so I mean, it could really just be petty theft, and we slap him on the wrist, tell him to go do some community service and fine them, yeah, I mean, it's a stolen bike.
Alright, so I'll leave you two councilmembers to take a look at that, um, so we correct for that. Appreciate your comment, we'll take a look into that, thank you.
Hey, you.
Thank you, Neil.
Name's Niall.
Neil, Niall? Alright, sir, you have the floor?
Hey, Robert Banner, Public Defense Office, how are you?
Oh, well, how are you doing today?
Alright, alright, I just wanna, well, other than be stunned, but wanted to note in that I also concur with Paco that that would be a more of a petty theft charge. And uh, should be written in to the penal code, more than most likely.
I, I think we're mostly all in agreement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Appreciate you, thank you. Well, 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 well.
Yeah, let's, let's get this going.
Paco say well, well, well.
Okay, here, where the rain is so strong.
Well, well, well.
Wow, yourself.
Well, well, well.
I, I like Caputo.
That's okay.
I do too.
Yeah, everyone does.
Are you okay?
So.
Hello, sir.
Sorry, what was your name, sir?
Yeah, what is your name?
Benedict Caputo, Attorney General, former city councillor. Uh, I just wanna say on this round of questions there, bicycles are vehicles, don't steal fucking bicycles, I shouldn't have to say this.
Language, sir.
But they're not automobiles.
Apologies.
That's a strike, that's a strike.
That's a strike.
You should know better.
You should know better, sir.
Yeah, bicycles are vehicles, and you shouldn't need to ask questions about stealing bicycles, I, come on, give your head, give your head a shake. Other than that, uh, I just wanted to say it's more of a statement of support for the staff of Pillbox, City Hall, and other government institutions that have recently been facing ridiculous strings of harassment and violence for no particular reason by a handful of salacious and disreputable nitwits who think that it's their right to treat people who do nothing but assist the people of the state with the time and efforts to save lives better, to treat them like garbage. Un- unacceptable, and beyond ridiculous, and should not be tolerated any longer. Councils should look at legislation to treat these criminals as the literal scum of the earth that they are. My doors open as the Attorney General to any councils who want to discuss this further, and enter their voices and opinions before actions are taken to curtail the reprehensible behavior of these lunatics, thank you.
Off with their head!
Alright, and these, um, I'm assuming these actions you speak of are all within the legal means, correct?
Oh, they will be.
Alright, I'm gonna support you, a hundred percent.
So, I, I have spoken with Mr. Caputo, uh, AG Caputo here about my thoughts, as well as the Chief Justice. In particular to the growing violence against uh staff members at Pillbox, I would like to concur with uh Mr. Ca- Caputo here, that these actions are reprehensible, uh, attacking people who are merely there to save lives is a disgusting and loose, and absolutely unacceptable behavior, and I will be uh working with uh the AG, uh, the Chief Justice, as well as my fellow councilmembers to address this, um, as, as a defense attorney. Um, I believe that the, uh, that these actions need to be punished, um, with, you know, without any prejudice, and need to be dealt with the most severest of uh ways, because we can't have people not be able to go to Pillbox and feel safe, we can't have our medical staff feeling like they have to arm themselves to protect themselves from the lunatics that come in there.
I completely agree.
Hundred percent agree.
Are, are, are.
I hate violence!
Are, um, the current staff considered government officials, or are they only considered private?
They are government officials.
The current staff at Pillbox is government.
So, do their charges that, um, you come about reflect that?
Correct, however, it's not stopping uh people in its uh growing violence.
Yeah, that's not, uh, I was just making sure it's being classified, I mean, I mean, obviously laws don't stop crimes, people still commit crimes with laws on the books. I was just wondering if they're considered uh classified as government officials when they get the charges.
What about security guards for the hospital?
Currently in the works.
We are staffing, yeah. Go ahead, Doctor.
So, one of the proposals I have put forward is that, um, any violent felonies committed uh against uh Pillbox staff, uh while they are performing their duties is considered uh three times the fine and time. Um, as a way of curtailing this aggression against the staff.
Are you working with the prosecutors with that, or are the AGs?
I'm working with the uh, uh, AG, the prosecutors, and Chief Justice.
AG, are you aware of this?
Yes.
Alright, and you concur with this?
Yes.
Alright.
Alright.
Well, I see no reason, uh, nothing against it, thank you, Mr. Caputo, appreciate your time and your service, thank you.
Thank you, we love you chronically.
Can I figure the stamp chair out, what the hell?
Alright, sir, you have the floor?
Hey, how you doing, uh, Rory Hatchett, Chief Police, uh, I wanted to ask, uh, can we talk about businesses in this?
Yeah, the floor is open there, chief.
Okay, I wa- I want to vent, one of my personal frustrations I have with the, the current structure we have surrounding businesses. Uh, I believe that there are a lot of businesses in the city, a lot of opportunities, and those businesses sit there and provide nothing. Nothing is happening with them, the only business I could say in this state that is actively trying to give people an experience and give people a place to go is Burger Shot, shout out to the Burger Shot people. Every other business is just sitting there empty, uh, I don't care if there's stock in those businesses, I want people running those bars, I wanna be able to go in there, grab a beer with a bartender. Is there anything we can do to look at the businesses being foreclosed on if the owners are neglecting those properties, I don't care if there's stock in those bars, let's be honest. Crime rates, what happens? There's no businesses open, people can't do anything, they're bored, what do they do? They resort to crime. You give people job opportunities, you give people actual opportunity to grow and develop a career that isn't in the government agencies, that's in the uh EMS, the police, anything like that, give them actual jobs out there, uh, maybe we'll see less crime, but uh I don't know, I'm just getting frustrated that I can't seem to get a beer anywhere.
Yeah.
Hell, yeah.
Uh, I can go first, I can go first.
I don't know who that is, but he's Sir Brian.
Other uh BRB members that have been, there are city members of the council and some are in the audience. Uh, I for one, um, will only, currently I only give out contracts to businesses that do have employees, so Burger Shot is the only, um, business that I have contracts in the city for uh catering because they have employees. I know while in the bureau, I wanted and tried to figure out a way to have every business staffed. Um, that is an initiative that I know the bureau is moving towards, there's only so much I think they're allowed to do. Um, but I completely agree, I concur with you a hundred percent. Uh, I would love to have some type of legislation in place where it would require that, but I think that's gonna be a question for, um, the office above ours, uh, but I know the pe- the council members that are on the BRB, um, Ashley to my right, and I don't know if I see Dale in the audience. Um, I see Val, and they could speak to kind of the, the uh vision they have for the bureau.
Dale's right here in the second row.
Okay, alright, um, so uh, Dale can speak about it, I appreciate it, chief, uh, Dale can speak to your answer a little bit better too, as far as like where the bureau is headed right now.
Just a, just a, like, lead off, uh, I think a city is only as good as the experiences and opportunities you can provide, and I think uh businesses right now severely lacking. So let's do something about that, and uh, when you do see people putting on an event, like the roller rink last night, let's get, everyone get out there and support them, because uh that's what makes a city thrive, and I don't want. that's what makes a city thrive, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna see this city go down because of lack of opportunities and criminals take over, am I right, Paco?
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, chief.
Thank you.
Hello, uh-
Alright, Dale.
Dale breath quits? Yep.
Every time.
Uh, yep, it's, uh, rare that I get a week without speaking, so I'll keep it short and sweet, um, we've seen new director of the Bureau, been working on
Liar!
legislation for quite some time, trying to tackle this very issue. Uh, it's a difficult thing to legislate about, and just to concur with, uh, Chief, uh, sorry, Chase Reeves. Um, it will require some federal intervention at some point. So, we're hoping to get a better range of tools to do, deal with businesses, and those businesses on their application who say they're employing other staff to get listings of their staff, and to offer incentives, um, and also, uh, large stick to, um, ensure, uh, that's done. So it's, it's recognized, it's extremely good point, and it's one we're all in agreement with, I believe.
I don't know how to use short and sweet either.
Well, I appreciate you coming down and explaining that, uh, looking forward to what you're doing for the, uh, Bureau, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Will, will the BRB be putting any focus on individuals that purchase properties but, but don't use them? Or, or just do, uh, buy them to prevent others from, from starting businesses there?
I believe that would be out of our purview, because, uh, our purview is about business. Property, uh, isn't so much about business, so our focus would be what we call mid-level businesses, those with registers, uh, with stock, with delivery systems. Uh, I think that is the area that we're discussing, that with hospitality first and foremost, but also retail. That and those is absolutely imperative. Small businesses or properties which don't have a business, uh, less so. Do you have something in particular in mind, uh, Mr. Paco?
No, it was, it was just, just a general question.
Um, I mean, that, you, you know, anyone could purchase, uh, a property, and that's more of a dynasty area.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question, Mr. Director. Um, what can we, what do you think we can do to better incentivize business owners to fully staff and operate their business? And what struggles are you hearing from business owners that are preventing them from being, uh, able to operate their business, um, fully staffed?
I think the major problem that I've experienced in the last two months, three weeks is, uh, owners that have been outside of the state for a huge amount of time, that have put in, uh, certain managers, uh, what's called full access employees, and those have kept the business operating. And slowly, there is a, a, a change there. Um, I think Horn is a particularly apt example from this week, and we're gonna see a, a lot of change at that particular site, with its new ownership. But, uh, unfortunately, how the Business Compliance Act, um, is written means essentially we have like a two min- month period in order to make any change, and even then we have to go through the civil action, so I think strengthening the act and putting a procedure in place where we can call the federal government to foreclose certain businesses, uh, will certainly expedite that. Um, I think in terms of incentivization, what I'd like to see, uh, is, uh, reductions in the filing fees. Essentially, uh, if you're hiring numbers of staff and you can document that, then I think we should lower the tax burden because there's additional complexity there, and it also adds, uh, to the, um, the fabric of the city, so to speak.
Yeah, I've even floated the idea of subsidizing those, uh, institutions that do have employees to more, to better options for, uh, City Hall events, where we need either vendors, um, or anything like that, so, um, so, yeah, we're currently working on incentives, though.
Yeah, I think there needs to be a, a range of, uh, tools available, because it's not one size fits all. There are, there are very different industries, different, uh, obviously different locations, there, there's a lot of diversity, so I don't think we could approach it with, you know, uh, just a screwdriver, so to speak, we need different sized tools for this.
Do, uh, do you think it would be feasible for a, a business, once they reach a certain stature, um, to perhaps have the federal, uh, clock-in system, uh, like other businesses have? Do you help, uh, over, uh, uh, help with the cost of employment and keeping people, uh, gainfully employed?
Uh, ideally, uh, that would be in place, but that's more of a federal issue, and certainly, um, anyone uh, can, can start a business, a small business, they can grow that into a mid-level business, obviously with the petition process. Um, but there is, um, obviously, uh, delays inherent with federal contractors, so that would be the ideal, um, end goal, we'd like to see businesses start small, move to medium, and hopefully, ideally become what we class as large businesses with, again, the same sign-on, uh, system. Also, trying to build into legislation different definitions for essentially charities, not-for-profits, cooperatives, giving many different flavors rather than the vanilla, straight business that the Business Compliance Act defines at the moment, so it's, again, trying to have, uh, a, a range of different solutions.
Yeah, all of which, um, I'm just making a statement here, all of which is a new territory, considering it's the newest, uh, Department of the DOJ. Um, in the event to keep the, excuse me, keep the event moving, the meeting moving, can, um, I appreciate your comments, Dale.
Anytime, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for keeping it short and sweet.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for keeping that short.
We love you, Dale.
Hi. Hi, Gubbo there.
That was short and sweet.
Hello, queen of the city.
Uh, you, you have the floor, man.
Now, this is an issue, and I'm gonna finally fucking br- can I curse?
That's a demand, that's a demand.
Wait, uh-
Strike one, strike one.
She's not a council member, but-
This is a fudging issue, that I've decided to break my silence on. I want this whole room to hear me when I say this, because if you're in the audience right now, this goes out to you. Seemingly overnight, some mother trucker thought it was a good idea to steal Christmas. Christmas is done! There are no Christmas lights, no Christmas trees, and nobody's saying anything about it. I've asked all of these, I've asked like two of these people, and nobody seems to give a crud. No, I'm not a trucker, this is Christmas.
Don't you worry.
I would like to buy this. It needs to play soon. Did you do this, banner? Did you steal Christmas?
Bethanah, my sweet daughter, angel.
Did you do this? Did you steal Christmas, banner? You are the Grinch.
Christmas is brought back to the city, I agree with you, it was beautiful yesterday, it was a whimsical Christmas wonderland. We're gonna find this Grinch, we're gonna tie him up by his sandals, and we're gonna bring Christmas back to Los Santos.
Concur.
Thank you, we're gonna bring the holidays back.
I'm glad you didn't steal Christmas.
There you go, yep.
I don't know, though. Finally, somebody with some logic. That'll be all, thank you.
Love you.
Interesting.
Okay.
Wild put.
At first I thought it was banner that stole Christmas.
Uh, yes, okay.
Robert Daynob, um, I'm the owner of Vagina, but not yet the operator, because my restaurant is not open yet. Um, chief, uh, you make a great point, uh, I one hundred percent, uh, agree that I think, uh, all businesses should be staffed. Uh, the problem is, is that it's, it's, staffing is a citywide problem. Every agency in the government, every business always struggles with staff, it's just a problem that we're gonna have, and we need to work around. Now, yeah, I thought of a saying that I don't think ever has been said, it's, uh, it takes a village to raise a city. And honestly, if people that, like the council members and a lot of the business owners around the, the, the city uh, care about the city like, like I think they do, we can all work together to try to solve the problem. And, uh, and, and I, and I think that's the best way to attack it, you know, be, you, you know, from the citizens, uh, maybe only supporting, or mostly supporting the businesses that have employees, uh, to the business owners, getting creative, trying to figure out how we can work together to make sure our stores are all employed around the clock. Um, it's just something that we have to work together on, it's not something we can just lay on the government or the federal government, it's something that we as citizens of the city should all have to work together on.
I agree.
And one final comment about Mr. Caputo over here. I wanna thank him for his time at City Council, and I, I certainly hope that he sits in on the, uh, meetings because his, uh, his, uh, wisdom and his quotes, uh, will go on forever, just like the great quote, "Don't steal bicycles." And the greatest quote I've heard in city chambers so far-
I don't know, maybe I am.
"Don't have sex with animals."
That's right.
Yeah.
Not, do not have sex with animals.
Only those actually, don't, don't-
Are, are you done?
Actually, don't, don't fuck animals, but, you know.
Yeah, we're not allowed to touch them.
Yeah, yeah.
Hooray!
Hooray!
Three cheers for not having sex with animals, hip hip.
Hooray!
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 Why are we, why are we-
Hooray!
Hey!
I have two-
The fuck qualifies as an animal? I hate it here.
Robert Banner is direct, this question is directed to, um, Councilman King. Councilman King, earlier, um, we did notice that you were granting wishes to people. Did you grant the wish to get rid of the trees and Christmas? Did you steal Christmas, sir?
Not a, okay, first of all, can I, can I respond to this?
He's asking you.
I think it's supposed to, bobbling.
Can I stand on this table when I respond?
Oh, no. How dare he accuse him!
Okay, okay, I won't stand, I won't stand, I won't stand.
Oh, no.
It was you!
Robert Banner?
Oh, God.
That is discrimination. Just because I'm green, you think I'm some kind of Grinch?
That is not discrimination. And, sir, I am playing the Grinch.
Argumentative, strike, strike.
So, so you are the Grinch, does that mean you stole Christmas, Mr.?
No, I do not have the bobbling powers to steal Christmas, sir, you are the one with the, the army of followers.
Neither did the Grinch.
Steal Christmas. Not only has no one made the wish for me to get rid of Christmas, people have made the wish for me to bring Christmas back. And by golly, to the end of my leash, I'm gonna make this city merry again.
I just wanna say that I find it odd that Christmas went away after Banner finally watched the Grinch.
The doctors in the room, check, check the size of his heart.
Yeah. Keeping my eye on you.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything to, uh, raise to the council?
I don't know if I believe that you didn't steal Christmas, Banner.
Does any council members have any statements or speeches they'd like to give?
Oh, Paco.
Huh? What, what was that, chief?
Uh, do you have anything to say, Paco, I guess?
No, I thought I heard my chief say something, no, uh, no, strike that from the record.
Doc, doc, his heart's higher, that's not where his heart is.
Oh, that's, alright, so, uh, moving on, moving on. Keep this thing moving, we have about fifteen minutes here, and, uh, just wanted to bring some great news to the city, for those who do not know, make some type of announcement about it. Um, and then how they, how, we move forward from this. Uh, for those who do not know, the, uh, governor has passed away. Passed away, passed away yesterday. Um, as details come out, you know, we have a functioning newspaper, and I have utmost confidence in the doctors and all of that, as, as information comes out.
When's the next election for the governor?
Uh, please know our first one, continuing this, um, the, uh, as we move forward, just remember that no matter what comes out, that he was a, um, he was a public servant, and for that, we should all be thankful for that. Um, take a special kind of people to stand up for the city and represent people they don't even know. Uh, and the governor did that, so just remember that as, uh, details come out, um, and we move forward as a governing body, um, give us the leniency to figure that out, uh, as this is uncharted waters, uh, we do not know, uh, moving forward how this will affect everything that we do here. Um, with that, I do congratulate all those that have, uh, been on this council, that got elected, and those that got re-elected, um, and those that, uh, stay here working for the city. Um, and as we move forward, uh, to the next stages of all of this, I would like to thank all the people that come down here, um, and give us opinions and speak your, uh, speak your two cents in your mind on what you think the city should be, because without that, we wouldn't have, uh, we wouldn't be in the place that we're at, so, um, so as we mourn the loss of the governor, just, uh, hopefully we look forward to, look forward to the, where the city is headed, um, and I think we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be alright.
Do we have a moment of silence?
A moment of silence, yes, a moment of silence for, for the governor. Alright, thank you. And on that note, meetings adjourned.
I know that part, that means it's over, right?
I mean, it's over, we're done.
Bummer ending point, man, like, you know, thank God my ass was falling asleep. More full thumbs up for the governor.
Wait, when's the new election?
My scout, I need to talk to you. We're not-
Uh-oh.
And by the way, you see your face.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
If I have to hear one more holiday themed thing.
Hi, Robin.
I had to find-
So-
Oh, the mayor election, mayor election.
I, I wanna, I wanna nominate Caputo for governor.
Oh, yeah, the governor died, oh, the mayor election.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, because it should be governor election.
You, you should try to get Christmas back.
In the cops, they even said that, like, we're working on-
It's not a vehicle, it's not a vehicle, it's not-
So I think there's hope.
It does, it, it, you could get possession of a stolen vehicle, but you can't get grand theft auto. It does not fit. Um, the bike would actually, actually be more of a petty theft due, due to the price of it, let's be honest. Okay, so when's the government, uh, gonna have a, um, governor election, Mr.?